Okay, good Stephanie?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, are we, are we okay? Okay, all right. Calling, calling the meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. We're going to please ask everybody if they would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll accept any public comments at this time, seeing no one here for public comment. We're gonna move on to our approval of the minutes, and this is from our meeting on Tuesday, May 26th. We did not have a meeting last week due to the primary election, so we look for a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from May 26, 2020.
Well, seconded.
It moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. Moving into COVID-19 planning response from our correctional facility, we would be looking for this one item. Margaret, anything to add for Ms. Minarchik?
Nothing to add.
Okay. We'd be looking to approve the reinstatement of Danielle Minarchik, our drug and alcohol therapist coordinator at our correctional facility, from reduced hours to, to the regular full-time status, and this would be effective. Is that correct retroactively to Sunday? Well, we can approve it as such, and I don't think there's any issue with that, but just to note that. Okay. We'll look for a motion at this time.
Motion to approve the reinstatement of Danielle Minarchik from reduced hour furlough to regular full-time status, effective June 7.
I will second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. Moving on to resolutions, we are looking to adopt Resolution 13 of 2020, and Betsy Barton is here to discuss that a little bit. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about this resolution we're gonna adopt, Betsy? If so, if you wouldn't mind joining us at the microphone? And yeah, we'll turn the floor over to you. Sounds good.
Aye, it is a policy of Center County to implement programs to ensure equal opportunity in housing for all persons, regardless of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, familial status, handicapped, age, ancestry, and use of guide and support animals because of blindness, deafness, or a physical handicap of the user, or because the user is a handler or trainer of those support or guide animals. This is in accordance with the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. Through this resolution, the county is making owners of real estate, builders, and developers become aware of the responsibilities with respect to fair housing. Center County is required to annually adopt this resolution as part of the CDBG grant program application. Once approved, the resolution will be posted on Center County's website and also posted in the Willabank and Courthouse buildings, as well as an ad placed in Center County Daily Times. Chinese language was added this year, as the American Community Survey data showed that five municipalities were higher than 5% of the jurisdictional population of limited English proficiency. And since this resolution is for the entirety of Center County, the translation must occur as we previously did with Russian language.
Okay. Thank you very much, Betsy. Any questions, comments for Betsy on this? Seeing none, will there be a motion?
Motion to add Resolution Number 13 of 2020 to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. We'll turn it over to Margaret at this point for a Capitol Project discussion about signage.
Yes. This morning, the item before you is a change order. It would be the fourth change order for the courthouse renovation project, and this is for signage that we must purchase to be in compliance with code. So it's not for the entire facility, but it is just for those things that code will look for, exits, stairwells, that sort of thing. This was not calculated in the original cost of the project, so we're treating it as a change order, even though it's with a different vendor.
So this is not part of the Temple Court Courthouse Annex project? This is actually the courthouse?
This is signage for the courthouse.
Okay, thank you.
And the proposed signage will be the same as the signage in the courthouse annex, so that there's consistency across the numbers.
Okay.
My only comment here is, I really think that the signage at the courthouse annex is overdone. I think there's a sign for every possible thing over there, and I would, I would be more conservative in making sure that we only put the signage that we truly need, because it is incredibly confusing, even to me, when I go over there to see the number of signs that, you know, there's a sign for the sign for the sign. And my only suggestion is we, we be thoughtful about the number that we place.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner. It sounds like with this one, this is code requirement. So in terms of this, are you comfortable with the?
Right. No, I'm just saying, I think in the, in the annex, I think we overdid the signs. That would be my, that would be my thought.
If there are, when we move into the courthouse project, or even here at the Willabank, if there's, once we have the final proposal, if there's any we wanted to remove that are not code requirement, I think we're all, I'm sure that we're happy to have that conversation. I think the thing with that was we wanted to make sure that it was done well, appropriately, but respect your opinion on that. Absolutely, sure. Okay. We would then, any other questions for Margaret on this, comments? Okay. Thank you, Margaret, for that. We look then for a motion to approve the purchase.
Motion to approve the purchase of signage from Howard Industries.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. And we'll continue with Margaret on this Esri contract.
Next item is a contract renewal with Esri to provide technical support and software upgrades. As you know, this is the software package that our GIS offices use extensively for mapping and also assisting us with our website platform. And as I said, the renewal, it's for $23,740. It's for the period of August 22nd, 2020 through August 21st of 2021. So we're bringing this in earlier than the start date or termination date.
Thank you, Margaret. Any questions on this? Comments? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the contract renewal with Esri Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. And then lastly, an MOU.
This is an MOU with our M H I D office with Journey Center to facilitate coordination of care or interagency referrals to provide mental health care for Center County residents. This is a no-cost agreement. It's a five-year agreement for the period of May 20, 2020 through May 20, 2025. And what this allows our staff here to do is to make referrals to this program should the services be necessary. Services are typically funded through medical assistance, so therefore, there's not a need for any type of funding arrangement to go with this.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Were there any questions for Margaret on this MOU? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the memorandum of understanding with Journey Center LLC to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. We have today's consent agenda, which is just one contract for work keys. Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Anything to report further, Margaret, in the administrator's report?
Not today.
Okay. Moving into our check run, Commissioner Higgins.
Sure. Somewhat smaller than average check run of $1,083,597.55. To talk about something that we just recently finished, we have a check to William Pen Printing Company for $25,699.16. I believe this covers most of the expenses of printing the ballots for the primary that we just finished. Had a lot of mail-in ballots, but thanks to county staff, some volunteers, and I think even possibly maybe a paid person or two, we managed to get that done pretty quickly, I think faster than most of the other medium-sized and larger counties in the state. So thanks again to our election department, thanks again to our poll workers, thanks again to county staff who work as poll workers, and all of the other volunteers we had, including a number from our local business community there at the very end. I know, Steve, you had some friends who also helped out, so.
There were a lot of folks there.
Yep. So great effort by everyone, and I would like to make the motion to approve the check run dated June 5th.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the check run. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. We'll move into voter registration and other election updates. We'll turn it over to Commissioner Dershowitz.
Yeah, to kind of layer on to what Mark indicated a little while ago, I do have some, not complete tallies, because we do, we have 40 or so military ballots still outstanding. The total registered voters in, in Center County that were eligible in the election were 89,121. There were 18,316 Democratic ballots cast, and of those 18,000, and some, there were 13,512 absentee and mail-in ballots. So roughly 5,000 people showed up on Election Day to physically vote. The Republican ballots cast were 14,593. Of those 5,400 were absentee and mail-in. So roughly, you know, probably 5,000 or so, or 8,000 or so other ballots cast. We have, I guess 9,000 would be more correct. And then we have the voter turnout, which is 36.93%. That's, I think that's a pretty respectable turnout between both the in-person and the mail-ins. But I want to take a moment and, as Mark did, and particularly thank Commissioner Pipe, who really took the ballot calculation task on after the election, which was no small, no small venture, to get, well, 19,000 ballots, you know, counted in a matter of three days. Not only took a lot of folks physically doing it, but to your credit, you actually organized and figured out how to get it done. And that's, that was a monumental task for, for the first shot at it. The question, we were talking about this just before the, before the meeting, is what do you do in the fall when the numbers are dramatically higher? So it's gonna take a legion of people counting and organizing. So not only do we have the challenges that, you know, like at the hub in Penn State on Election Day, but we're also going to have to tackle that early balloting, an absentee and mail-in discussion early on, on Election Day. And so that'll be one element of what we do, making sure the live, in-person people have, have what they need. So it's gonna be a challenge, and I think we're up for it, but I really want to give kudos to my fellow commissioners, but particularly Michael, for really stepping up and organizing that effort. So a lot of counties, I think, probably struggle with that, or maybe they, maybe they had equal participation, but a lot of folks in our organization, a lot of folks in the community really, really stepped up to make it happen, and I want to thank you for, for all that. So that being said, hopefully very soon, I'll come back to be able to give you, you know, updated information, and we'll be able to do precinct by precinct and see how the turnout was. But I don't think in the, you know, high to mid 30s, that's a decent voter turnout for, for, for an event like this, considering all the, all the gyrations that we had to deal with. So, and we appreciate everybody coming out to vote, and all the poll workers for making it happen, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, for those kind words. I think it was a team effort, and I was happy to spearhead it, and the elections office did a phenomenal job making sure that all 87 precincts across the county ran smoothly, and we troubleshooted. I know you were out and about at a few precincts, dropping off generators, troubleshooting some, you know, voter issues and concerns. So Commissioner Higgins, you as well, were on call and helpful, and I think it was a, it was a really good effort, and I think we can all agree, not just from this board, but the community as well, we're glad to have that election behind us, and again, move into the green phase and move into other things here in the community. But you're absolutely right, November is gonna be a Herculean effort, and our goal is to, again, get results counted and done in a more timely fashion. And again, that's gonna mean the people of Center County, they stepped up to help us run the polls, and again, helped to count the mail-in and vote, vote-by-mail ballots, and so we're gonna, we're gonna need them again in November. So we're gonna be doing a large recruitment effort, and, you know, it's a challenge that we can certainly meet, without a doubt. So, thank you. Thank you again, Commissioner. Any other announcements we'd like to make on this? Okay. Any executive sessions to report?
Yes, the Board of Commissioners met in executive session on Friday, June 5th, from 4:20 p.m. to 5:22 p.m. to discuss a legal matter, and we also committed a short executive session.
A legal matter today as well? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We again have the balance of our schedule. We will also, on Thursday, again, be having a commissioners' meeting, and that date would be Thursday, June 11th, commissioners' meeting, prison board meeting, and retirement board as well. All right. And so we, please, Gary, Evan, any questions?
You mentioned obviously elections, the official timeline it took, I know there's still some outstanding votes right now, but the official timeline roughly it took to get at least by and large, the, most of the votes counted, and then if you have any timeline for November, you know, obviously, I think there, for presidential, there's gonna be more votes, but there may be also more pressure to, because it's a presidential election, to get the votes in.
It is, it's not good.
So question is, I guess, is there a timeline? You'd like to, ideally, at least, you know, date-wise, like to have the, all the votes or, if not by and large, most of the votes counted by?
Well, it's one of the things we're gonna debrief and talk about when we get to an election board meeting after our results are certified and official. The key thing is, it took us three days to count about 19,000 ballots. We had roughly about 12 people, 10 to 12 people working in the room at one time. So if you, if we look at the math, look at the numbers, it's essentially just scaling it out. And if we can do that effectively and recruit, once people get trained on it, and we may do some practice runs in late October, just to show people what that would look like. Typically, we have poll workers come in to learn how to use the machines that are there at an election, but instead, if we would bring people in just to have a training on what that looks like. We could recruit very easily, I think, if we do it in a larger space. It's, it's just numbers at that point. The challenge is, people will also have until 8 o'clock to drop off their ballots to us in the general election. So it's taking those votes, making sure that they're coded here at the office that we've received them, and then taking them to a location to be counted. That's gonna be the big challenge. Again, we've got about 140-some days to do it, to think about it, so we're gonna plan for that. But yeah, it's, the goal would be, as soon as we can, but again, counting every vote and making sure it's done in a, in a open, fair way. And we did it in the primary, we can do it again in the, in the general.
Other question, shifting years a bit for me, would be, I know back now, almost, you know, over a month ago, easily would have been 100 county workers, furlough, temporary furlough, where are we in the process, and how many, do we know how many have been brought back, and how many maybe even intentions in the future to bring back at this point? Since obviously, we're in the green phase and more, and more seem to be, you know, being brought back.
We can get exact numbers, but essentially, there were 100 individuals or positions affected. There were 20 positions that were left vacant, and so many of them are still vacant. But of the 80 individuals, we have had a majority return to full status. We do have some that are still on either partial hours or on full-time furlough, but again, it's a conversation with department heads and elected officials. As the need arises, they would then be brought back, and so we're constantly having that conversation. But we can get, we can send, Evan, or anybody else who's interested, the exact numbers of how many individuals we still have out, out on full-time furlough and part-time.
And ultimately, it is the department heads that are making those recommendations, correct? Are there any other players, or is it the?
Yeah, department heads, elected officials, our administrators, is a coordinator of that with our HR office, so.
President, judge.
Yeah, exactly. President, judge is really for the courts, and they've brought up, they've brought a considerable amount of people back. But again, Margaret's having those more direct conversations, if there's anything you'd wanna add to that.
I think that captures the process, and also, some department heads have recognized that they don't have work right now, they might have work in a few weeks, and so there's also been some individuals who have been placed on furlough, who were not placed on furlough initially. So it's been a fluid process, continues to go on, and our numbers are down considerably from the starting point.
Do you plan to bring them all back into an office setting, or are there some situations that some folks might be working from home or remotely?
Right now, the guidance is that individuals, employees who are able to work remotely should continue to do so. We understand that some work needs to be done here in the building, and we need to make sure that the public has an opportunity to come in to receive what they need. So it's, it's a hybrid at this point in time, but for the foreseeable future, until a decision is made otherwise, we are encouraging remote work where possible.
Any other general lessons from the election, besides the fact you're gonna have to gear up from November, but just, I know it's only been a week, but any other observations jump out?
I think we captured most of it. I, I don't know if there are.
I think we're just, we're still gonna need more poll workers in November. We had a number of polling locations that had kind of the bare minimum of poll workers, and that worked for this election, 'cause Commissioner Dershowitz, we had, what, 13,000 and change or something show up in person. Obviously, in November, it's gonna be a lot more than that, so we're gonna need more poll workers come November.
I think, I think the challenge is gonna continue to be for our board is to not, as we fine-tune the counting process, to really look at the opportunities we have to look at our bigger precincts, particularly the hub, which we consolidated all the precincts, and that's gonna be our big challenge, is making sure everybody is flowing very well. Now, we, again, you know, Michael's been very instrumental in that over the years, and I think we'll be, we'll be all right, but it's gonna take, it's gonna be all hands on deck this time, because not only do we have the challenges of getting the people counted, but I would presume that come November, we'll probably still have social distancing and all the things that that requires, so it'll be longer, longer, longer lines. There're just, you know, the geography of it will be a challenge, and keeping everybody separated. So we're gonna have our hands full trying to negotiate this through the next phase, but I'm, I'm confident we'll work through it and make it happen.
And follow-up to that would be, you anticipate there will be students back voting at the hub this fall?
I am anticipating it, and very optimistic that there will be students back at Penn State on campus, doing what they do as students, yes.
Where do things stand with the courthouse renovation project?
Sure. So we were able to, when we entered the yellow or green phase, yellow phase, I should say, brought folks back to begin the construction, we're working through it. As we noted, we do have some change orders that are occurring as they begin to get further into the project. The goal is to strike a balance between finishing the project, but also doing it in a, in a way that ensures that our criminal justice system can still function. And so again, Margaret's been spearheading that and has been having frequent conversations with the court administrator, president judge, and we're very hopeful that we can get this finished in a timely manner as we come into the, the summer, so. But if there are any specific updates in terms of progress or anything like that, if you wanted to share those, Margaret?
Well, there are three different contractors working on the project, an electrical contractor, a plumbing contractor, and then the general contractor. They meet on a bi-weekly basis and compare where they are and are working very well together under the direction of Weber Murphy Fox, our architect and project manager. The fire suppression system is almost in place. That involves not only the water piping for the suppression system, but the electrical conduits. A lot of that is in place and almost completed. The vestibule in the back is well underway, and we're looking at completion here in a couple of weeks on that as well. So I, we're moving along, and hopefully, we'll have some more firm dates in the next couple of weeks here, about when we can look for, for completion.
Estimated price tag at this point? Total price tag, over.
I can tell you.
Sure, sure. Margaret, Margaret will be able to.
So the current project total, including the four change orders that have been approved over the last couple of months, is $1,276,833.37.
And when we started, without the change orders, it was how much, 1.?
So the amount of the change orders is a total of $16,797. As a percentage of a $1.2 million project, that's pretty minimal.
Let's knock on wood, but that's, that's an amazing number of, of change orders and almost statistically insignificant amount of money when it comes to a project of that size, so.
Dealing with a building that has parts that date back almost 150 years.
Yeah, yeah.
There have been very few surprises in the process, so that's been helpful.
I think the, I don't think it can be overstated, the, the value of having the, the fire suppression system finally in that building. That's a, such a historically significant building for the, not only downtown Belfont, but for our organization, and to be able to protect that finally is, is, that's huge. Very grateful for the job, well, job well done over there.
Is it mandated in this frequent place to pick your order? Doesn't really fit in with the historic nature of it.
That's a, you know, that's a really technical question. You're gonna win the award for most technical code question today, Gary. Yeah, that's, that's a great question, yeah.
Orders in the county are now allowed back in courthouse?
Is that right? Okay. Is that right? Okay.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, we've been having those conversations as a whole, Gary, so.
As with any construction project, there are different phases of the project, and the next phase of the project will be to consider painting of the conduit piping, which is bright red now. As you go into the courthouse, you can see it in the stairwells, you can see it in some of the common areas near the elevators and so forth. We were in conversation yesterday with the contractors about what that can look like and, and still be code compliant, because you need to find a way to label those in some way, but we've got paint matches yesterday, and so we believe that we're going to be able to paint them the same color as the brick in the, in the building. So it's a process, and we're not finished with the process, and when it's finished, I don't think you're gonna see very much red.
Thank you.
Could be barber poles.
People seen in the courthouse, barber shop?
That's exactly right.
I will say that it's not possible to add a fire suppression system to a building as old as our courthouse without some places that that piping is going to be evident. Where there are drop ceilings, you can put the piping above it. The contractors have been excellent in finding ways to do that, but quite frankly, there are just some locations where the only way to get that in there is to have the pipes visible. And so it's a balance between, you know, fire protection preservation versus, you know, a little bit of movement on the aesthetics of a pipe. But we're gonna try to blend them in as best we can so that if they're not, your eye is not drawn to them.
Any estimated timeline for completion? I know you said it's kind of the year with the week.
Summertime. Late summer.
Few setbacks.
Reason with that is, if we would move into a different phase or whatnot, you know, it's, again, green, green until vaccine, but if there's some sort of, we don't wanna, you know, get ahead of ourselves there, so that's a great, great timeline, late summer. Okay? Thank you both, thank you both. At this time, we'd look to go into an executive At this time, we'd look to go into an executive session at 10:28.
Motion to go into executive session at 10:28.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're in executive session, thank you all.